It is four o'clock, November third, two thousand and twenty five. So we're going to call this meeting for Kitzers County Public Hospital District number one for Kitzers County to order. Do we have any thoughts or concerns about the agenda and entertain a motion when ready?
To approve the agenda?
Second.
A motion and second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye to a vote aye. Anyone opposed? That motion passes. We are now to public comment and so as is the case, we have three minutes for any individual that'd like to speak to the board. And again, as a matter of policy, we do not comment as you go. We listen, we take it in and we use that for our discussions during the times that we are allowed by law to talk as a group and so forth. So is there anybody who'd like to offer up some public comment?
Yes, please.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and set a timer just in case so that you all play but on that started over here. Hang on a sec. Set to three minutes before this meeting started, it went back to fifteen.
Just a clarification, is this one being recorded?
Yes.
I believe it is, yeah.
Last one. Last one. David? The last one was not?
Oh, the forum, not the barbie, most of the forum, yeah.
All right, three minutes. Your, your honor.
Thank you. For those in this room who don't know who I am, my name is Celeste. I've been part of KBH since nineteen ninety-four. That's thirty-one years. I dedicated thirty-one years to this organization. Throughout my time at KBH, I've witnessed many changes. Some of these changes improved our workplace while others have presented a challenge. One of the most positive developments was the creation of our shared values, clearly stated values. It started when I first started thirty-one years ago, KBH operated with no values, as in stated ones. The implementation of these values gave me a sense of pride. In my workplace, I felt proud enough to share with others where I worked, emphasizing that KBH is not just a small community hospital, but as our values have helped us become bigger and better, shaping our identity and the way we serve our community. The changes that have unfolded in the recent weeks have caused many employees to question whether KBH truly upholds those values or merely talks about them. We know our nursing staff consistently provides respectful, transparent, collaborative care to our patients and our community. And unfortunately, this level of commitment seems to be matched by our current leadership. It is widely known among KBH employees that the respected leader with whom we once worked, who reminded us of our values daily, is no longer here, whether it be voluntary or involuntary. In the wake of this loss, we ask current leadership to demonstrate respect for what the staff is experiencing. Offering private grievance and loss counseling when leadership itself was responsible for the grief and loss is neither respectful or collaborative. We ask that current leadership be considerate of those who may overhear conversations celebrating the departure of this leader after only ten months. In the statement that was shared, these have been the worst ten months of my life. Also, we request that leadership acknowledge the extensive collaborative work accomplished by this leader during this period, rather than dismissing it as something that's always been. The leader who is no longer with us, voluntary or involuntary, was highly respected and consistently encourages us to uphold the KBH values. So on behalf of KBH nurses, the staff asked important question to you. If the staff are held to the values and standards of KBH by leadership, who holds the leadership to those same standards? We ask from leadership, what is the same for us, expected from us to, as service, collaboration, quality, and above all, respect? Without this, we're only going to return to nineteen ninety-four, thirty-one years when KBH functioned without any defined values. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to offer public comments?
I would.
Okay.
Hi, guys. As you guys know me, my name's Kara Henderson. I was born and raised, so I've been here since eighty-three. I've been a nurse at KBH for seventeen years and a nurse for twenty. And I love it here. I love Ellensburg and I think the reason I like to be a nurse is because I'm serving my community that I'm going to see at Fred Meyer, that I'm going to see at the school. And so I don't normally speak out like this. But it's just that important to me. So I just want to initially thank you guys for holding this meeting. When you realized that you needed to after the last board meeting, I just want to share some feedback from the last week about how we proceeded based on the guidelines you guys set forward in your memo. First, I acknowledge that an administration did hold an employee forum on Monday as outlined by your expectations. However, that meeting was not recorded. Even though KBH has historically recorded all forums, so staff across somebody's on, everybody needs to be muted. And I was literally so confident that this was going to be recorded that I chose to sleep for my night shift so I could provide safe patient care. And I woke up expecting to be able to listen to the minutes and they were not available. Nurses work, shift work, patient care techs work, shift work. A four P M. On a Monday is complete fine time to record a thing if it's going to be recorded, but we're all busy working and there's no access for us to watch that. So I have, all I can get are snippets from my peers about what was said. I have no concrete way to actually get that information. Again, that is not transparent and not inclusive. Second, the interview process for the interim C N O. Position started last Monday and bedside staff were initially not included. It took an email from KBH nurses requesting to attend before we invited to participate in the next interview. And again, I am genuinely thankful that that was received well and we are now included. But I just want to say that was low hanging fruit. There is no reason when you're trying to repair trust and integrity that you would not include nursing staff without us being asked. Low hanging fruit. So basically, as you move forward, I just respectfully sincerely ask you to keep an open mind and remain receptive to new information and new narratives that may differ from what you've been told. Thank you.
Anybody else like to have a public comment? Okay, hearing none, we will go on to reports. We have Chief Executive Officer Jason Adler. Can you update some of the things from our memo last day?
Yeah, so I had just the pre-voted items there to, for one, to hold an employee forum that we had scheduled for last week and then to immediately continue searching for an outside C N O. For an interim C N O. As we can then pivot to recruit for permanence, you know, and then to continue support our nursing leaders with unwavering commitment as we navigate this, this change in leadership. So that we did hold the employee forum. It was, it was for an era group. It wasn't all employee forums. We have never had one of these and we have never recorded a large staff meeting previously. I do want to acknowledge that it wasn't recorded. We do record our all employee forums and that's really the all employee forum and the board meetings have historically been recorded.
Is there any reason not to record one of these type of forums?
They can absolutely be recorded.
Is it something you would do or you're saying the employees could do it? What is it?
KBH would need to do it.
Okay, yeah, so I would definitely encourage finding a solution for that.
Thank you. Through that forum, we offered a really safe space for good dialogue. Appreciate the dialogue. Appreciate everybody who showed up to have that dialogue. Really look to some destructive work that we can do and take away from that to move forward and to get a new leader to help continue that mission vision values that we were all striving to. We are working on an interim C N O. So we did have one interview last week and we included all the nursing directors, all the direct reports, plus all of the executive team in that interview process. After that, I did receive a request from some of the nurse leaders requesting for them to participate as well and be accepted of that as well. Again, back to you, just as how we've always typically standard properties, we've included staff in executive level position, both the direct reports and that. So just that's how we've done them previously. I was looking to more feedbacks, so look forward to including some of the nurses as well in that search. Thanks to Janine for her super quick work of trying to locate a good interim. So she's contacted a couple of interim staffing agencies and been able to find four candidates. One of them did recently drop, though we look forward to interviewing tomorrow, but Janine's quick work was able to plug in one of the other candidates into there. So we do have two more interviews this week that we look forward to, to working through and hope to find just an absolute rock star candidate out of that as we look for really that leader to, to help our organization continue to work towards that mission and drive the value. For hopefully finding that sooner than later, but I don't want to put that data or time to that so we can really find a good quality candidate that we all agree on turning forward.
Do you think there's a realistic goal for accomplishing this? And how are we talking? A week, a month, four months? Would realistically based on the
Really hopeful that of these two candidates that we have this week, between those three interviews, we'll have one that we can hopefully make a decision on by, by this Friday. So hopefully, whereas we're back to drawing board to, to source more candidates.
Okay. And, and so potentially Friday for an offer, if you will, maybe acceptance. What's the reality? Because I would assume no one is local. Are these all regional or?
They're within the Northwest.
But they'd have to somehow relocate or get here. So I don't know if that's part of your discussion when
We have closing ready to go and both candidates are available immediately. At least I think it would be a quick turnaround if one of these two is blacked.
And, and just like I understand, you're including a deeper level of people in these interviews. That's correct?
Correct.
How many total people are we talking would attend to an interview or be participate?
The entire administrative team is, is one group and then the director reports. So the, the five nursing directors plus they each are picking one nurse as well to attend. So
And so that, that provides enough of a representation of the people who are, I obviously have direct concern over this to, to appease reasonable need of knowing what's going on and having to say.
And then from there, the last one is just to continue support our nurse leaders and our, our nurses as we navigate this change. So I have in case you ask Crystal to help help really be a voice and hear from those nurses and be an advocate and a liaison during this interim time as well. So I want to introduce Crystal Dinsley to kind of speak to some of the work that she's doing behind the scenes to help with this as well.
Crystal, do you want to give us some thoughts?
I'd love to. Thank you. Sorry for backside. The conversation that I need to have is going to be a difficult one to have. And I understand that when you have difficult conversations, sometimes it can be triggering for individuals who are present. But my experience has also taught me that the only way to get to the other side of a difficult conversation is to have it. So my experience, I have about twenty-one years in, in identifying cultural fracture and repair. And so I've spent the last couple of weeks just gathering data. I spend a lot of time listening, a lot of time watching with our senior leadership team as well as the staff. And I can definitely say that there's, is quite a deep fracture. I'm sure you can sense it. There is a fracture between staff and senior. There's even some fracturing among senior leadership. I think that this lovely image that we have here on the wall of our values is feeling like it's a little bit, it has eroded. And it's something that I know Debbie Callens, who was the former C N O., held to a very high standard and would utilize every day in her decision making. So as I've been in amongst the staff and trying to develop sort of a course of action on how we can pivot, knowing that we can't go back, but how do we repair and build something for tomorrow? That's where we're landing today. The, some of the things are already in motion. I have asked for a meeting with all of our nursing staff, many of whom are sitting here today, especially Deb's direct reports, starting with those who I'm meeting one-on-one with this week each day. As I meet with them, I'm making sure that we're in alignment with the mission and of this meeting on Friday. This meeting, the goal of this meeting is threefold. The first thing is to provide a space for empathy, understanding and validation. I think that it's a great opportunity for these beautiful nurses to come in and say, this is how I'm experiencing this moment. This is what has happened to me and for me to be able to speak to that. None of the senior leaders will be there. This is a special assignment, so they are trusting me with this work, which will create a different level of trust with our staff. So I'm meeting with those staff individually this week as we pivot to Friday. Friday, besides that, the, the opening moment of allowing for this sort of empathetic response to our staff, then the other two missions that we're trying to accomplish that day. The first one is to create a list. We're literally going to cover the wall. This is the space we're going to be in. We're going to cover it with fat post-it notes. I don't know what else you call them, big, large pieces of paper. We're going to try and document everything that has happened in their tenure. So some nurses, we've heard thirty-one years, we've heard seventeen years. And there's many who maybe have even been here just a year or something, but what things have impeded their ability to achieve clinical excellence while they've been here? Some of those pieces, we're going to diagnose those things, get them all written down. Then after we get all that done, we're going to pivot to identifying the foundational structures that Deb was putting into place that helped them feel seen, heard, valued, and able to engage with our mission, vision and values here at KBH. Those foundational pieces, which is, that's the portion that, that Deb had gotten to, was just building that foundation. Those foundational pieces are really important as we move towards this bridge between the former and the latter that's about to happen. As we are developing this, this meeting is eight-thirty Friday morning. By the end of the day, Friday, all of her direct reports will have this working document in their hands. They are to utilize it for the next week at all their, if they have an all-staff, at their all-staff huddles via email, however they see fit to communicate with their team. This working document will be added to so that nurses who are not in attendance will be able to add their insight to this document, both the things that have happened in the past and the foundational pieces that they'd like to see moving forward to maintain that excellence. After a week, I'm going to kind of close those comments. That will be, I will edit that up. It will be bound and presented to you. So all of the board will receive a copy of that document. Also, our senior leadership team, executive committee, they will all receive a copy of that document as well. Yes, John?
Do you have a general sense of when that would be ready based on?
By the next week. This is, this is top priority. I'm stopping everything.
Thank you.
And after you have that document, then you can review it. I think you'll get a really good sense at that time. A very open conversation of what has been hindering and what has been successful. At the end of that meeting, it's going to involve something that's very important for this healing, cultural repair, and that is an invitation. An invitation to the staff to, I, I've been using this metaphor as I talk to people. It's as if when, when this new leadership came in to be, it was as if everybody felt like they could plug into something, right? Oh, this is how I plug into transparency and this is how I plug into quality. Everyone was plugged in. And when this leadership shift happened, it's as if those cords were sort of yanked out. And right now it's challenging for some to figure out how to plug back in. So at the end of this, it's kind of comes with this invitation of how can we get back on same page as we transition forward? We're not going to solve all the problems in one meeting on Friday. But we are taking active, tangible steps for their voices to be heard and for you to have a good understanding of where we're at organizationally. So at the end of this little tenure assignment, I think that we will have made quite significant strides towards some repair and healing. I also have the full support of Jason that with my experience, I'm going to know in the first couple of minutes of meeting with our staff, if I'm going to be able to achieve this or not. I'll know right away. And if I'm not able to, if I'm not the right person for this job, I have the commitment of Jason to bring somebody in who can do this work. It's that important. And I think that, again, like I said, we, we, we can't really go back, but we can do something incredible in the future and that's kind of where we're trying to pivot to. Are there any questions that I can answer for our Board of Commissioners? Can you introduce yourself to Zoom? Oh. Sorry, didn't see my face. I'm Crystal Dinsley. I'm the Director of Community Relations here and on the special projects at the moment.
Thank you. Anything else for us right now?
No, that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
I, I think that my job is to address the board at this point, but my email is always open and if you type to questions@kbhealthcare.org, I'm right, right to you. So, thank you all.
And so just for clarification, you did one forum with employees. We've got what Crystal's going to be working on now. It feels like a little more individual basis stuff. Do we have more forums scheduled? Is there a need for more forums? Do people have, have people, the, the, the impact that people have a chance to ask the question they ask, are, are we using what Crystal's setting up going forward as the solution to that?
Yeah, Crystal will be helping pull and gather more information, get that recorded and then we'll pivot and go from there. Yeah, we are engaged to try to find that new interim C N O. And start doing that work so that, so that we can start getting that new leadership on the ground. Crystal's work will help to set up that new leader for success as well and give them a really good foundation and starting point of what they're working with.
On that note of listening and hearing what you're saying, I've received several emails along with the rest of the board from concerned individuals and I just want you to know that we read and listen and attention to every single one of those. Only one person replies and just that's the standard. So it's John, but I appreciate all of the thoughtful emails that have come our ways. Thank you.
There's also a critical piece that I left out. I apologize. Jason just reminded me of that with his comment. I've also been integrated to this C N O. Transition process. So I will be at all of the, the portion of the interview that's with staff and I will be at the portion of the interview that involves the executive committee. So then I will sort of liaise between those two groups. And also I'll be involved in that handoff of the document that we're creating to that new C N O. So that continuity exists through this whole process.
Thank you. Good. Anything else you'd like to share? For any of the, the staff that this directly relates to, is there anything you're not hearing about this process that you want to make clear to us? You still don't think is going to lead us towards any sort of solution? Is there, you know, this is your moment. I don't want to dialogue, but I just want to know if there's anything you think we're missing that we're not seeing yet that we need to put into action. So.
I'm not seeing any comments from some of the executive leadership. We have not heard from them. We've only heard from three of the executive leadership. Though I think that at the forum, we didn't get an opportunity to hear what everybody has to say and that was disappointing.
And who, who attended the forum?
Jason, Rhonda, Mandy, Vicky was there, but we didn't get a chance to hear from Vicky. So we didn't get a here, a chance to hear from Jennifer Reed, Janine, or Stacy or Jeff. We have not heard from them this whole time over the last couple of weeks.
So again, I would encourage leadership to be available to let people voice their concerns, even if it's uncomfortable. I just think not being heard is not good in this situation, even if you don't agree with each other. That's okay. You want to have a chance for people to be heard. So I would again encourage if what Crystal's doing doesn't solve all of this, go a little broader with again, some four different shifts, you know, like Kara talked about people, some of the people are asleep when you're doing a forum during the day. So just make sure everyone has a chance to be heard and if, again, if possible, record it so people can review it at a later time and so forth. We just really want to try to live up to the transparency. Anything else for your section of this meeting at this point? Okay, so next on the, on the agenda is the executive session. We have some things to talk about in the executive session following the R C Ws related to the purpose of executive session. So we're going to convene into executive session for a period of time. I will ask some people in a moment how long we need. And at the end of that, we will reconvene into public session and we will proceed with the last new business item, which is a resolution we're looking to put before the board tonight for possible passage into, into our bylaws and so forth. So for executives, can you tell me about how long we need?
I'd start with forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes. Does anybody disagree with that length of time, what we need to cover? Anything else? Anybody on the board feel they need to add time for something? Okay, hearing none. So what time is it right now? It's four twenty-five. So we'll, we will adjourn for five minutes until four thirty and at four thirty, we'll do executive session until five fifteen. As a standard protocol, as we get near five fifteen, if we need additional time, we will open the door and announce the length of additional time we need to add to executive session. Otherwise, you can assume at five fifteen, we will reconvene into public session such as this. Anybody who's interested can listen to the new business section of this agenda. So.
The reason for executive session?
Say again?
The reason for executive session?
The reason for executive session is to evaluate qualifications of an applicant for public employment or under R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one zero subsection one subsection G. And to discuss with legal counsel the legal risks of a proposed action or current practice under R C W four two point three zero point one one zero, section one, subsection I. Okay. And so we will, we will now take a break for five minutes and reconvene in executive session. So anybody, who do you need for executive session, Jason?
I'd invite the administrative team to join plus Crystal and Andrea and I think Pam Cluas are online as well.
Okay, and I think we'll have to start a new Zoom session for that. So we'll be closing this one out for forty-five minutes. So again, those who came today, I really appreciate it. If you want to stay at the end of executive session, we welcome you to come back in and listen to the next part of the meeting. But at this point, we're going to close the session and go into executive session for forty-five minutes. So thank you for coming today. So thank you for coming today.
Why is it this big?